Thank you. None of us were. You know. Thank you. Yes.
I think we've got a. But I think that's the sort of thing. Like, yeah. Obviously, it's always. You're wrong. I was too much. I would. Good evening. Let's call the February twenty one, twenty twenty three meeting of the University Heights City Council order. This is honestly all the wrong.
This is Sacks here. This is Langau. You want to do this, Rod?
Here.
This is Wise. Here, this is Cool.
Here.
This is Moonie.
Here. Here. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal of liberty and justice for all. Next item is the reading and disposal of the journal. Is there a motion? We have a motion to approve the minutes of February six, twenty twenty three by Mrs. Wise. Is there a second?
I'll say then.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? It's time to be called on.
This is Sacks. Hi, this is Langau.
Hi, this is Rod.
Hi.
Spines, I'm school.
Hi.
Me.
Hi. I'm. Okay, the minutes are approved. Uh, next item is item four additions and removals from the agenda of the proposed meeting. I would ask for a motion to move item B ordinance twenty twenty three dash ten as that ordinance uh did not get distributed to Congress Council. It's still being drawn. Change that book. Is there a motion to move that out of the agenda? See them. Yeah, or be one.
You know, close here.
Hey, well, all right, we have a motion on table uh that item. Nice second by Mr. King. That is honestly called on.
Sacks. Hi, this is Langau. Hi, this is Rod.
Hi.
Mine's I'm Cool.
Hi.
This is Moonie.
Hi.
This is Keen.
I'm. Stable. Drop back if you need. Uh, next, are there any other additions or removals from the agenda of the proposed committee this time?
Um, I would like to make a vote then to move agenda item nine C to uh instead to point uh item number seven. So uh before the reports you can't from the management report, you can't from comments.
Yeah, we do have a speaker on item A. It would be.
I would still like to move. So there's twenty three, twenty twenty three days go by.
Okay, so there is a motion to move item nine C uh before item A and in fact before reports uh and communications from the direct.
Yes, correct.
There's a motion by Mrs. Sacks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. White. A discussion on the motion? Mr. Keen, um, could you provide some background on why that would be moved?
Um, I I would like to make sure that we can still consult to be to um participate with.
Will we not be able to do that in regular?
I I guess information.
Though they may not be on point, I would also ask, even though even with what Mrs. Sacks had to say, we have a guest here to discuss nine A and it would be courteous to her also move that item up, if I have any notice.
I I understand and I'm I am looking forward to hearing that presentation. And I think what's going to be the information, so it should be should be fine. Thank you for um you want to make mention. Still about to.
Sure, sure. I'm just saying that that there could be a second one and share with me encouraged. Is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, uh, this is Thomas. We call the role.
This is Sacks. Hi, this is Langau. Hi, this is Rod.
Hi.
This is Wise. Hi, this is Blue. Hi, this is Blue.
There. Name. Oh, motion carries. Are there any other uh motions um additions or removals from the agenda of the proposed and would entertain a motion move out of nine A? Saying none, we'll move on. Uh, next item is comments from the audience. Uh, speakers are limited by minutes. And uh anybody here from the public would like to address the city this evening, please come on up to the podium, state your name, address the director, and they take up five minutes. Seeing none, we will then move on to reports and communications from the mayor and taking of action thereon. On Wednesday, February fifteen, twenty twenty three, last Wednesday, I delivered the twenty twenty three State of the City address transcript, which I have provided for the council. And I incorporated your environment. Thank you. This concludes my. Next is item seven, reports and communications from the city council and the taking of action thereon. This is what.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we moved it after seven before eight. No, it's after seven. It was that so. I thought something sounds.
And again, then we.
What do you mean? Is that what you asked? Okay. I misunderstood. I thought it was that seven. All right, well, then we will then move to what was formerly nine C amended ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh five and I can modify the ordinance section ten sixty four point oh two one entitled list recycling ser- services and declaring an emergency. I understand this is placed back on first reading due to major changes. And then they get the last time. This is Sacks. Uh, you are the sponsor. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Brennan, and thank you very much for inviting me to um move this in the meeting. So I'd like to just take a moment to provide a summary of the background and merit pertaining to ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh five. I should also provide clarification of recent questions that were uh asked at this public meeting. And since it has been challenging to be in public meetings, we technically believe that we might be but the councilman Justin Wood was compared to Service Utilities Committee and offered an important task in following up with University Heights twenty twenty solid waste study. So I wanted to take this opportunity first to recognize how it's been involved efforts which started us on the path leading to this ordinance twenty twenty three oh five, which positions University Heights to give a more positive, modern impact on the environment. Thank you for listening, Wood. As a successor, assigned to chair University Heights Service Utilities Committee, I continue following up on the twenty twenty solid waste study recommendations to address University Heights rubbish and recycling collection methods. Our committee fulfilled this goal to the greatest extent that the legislative legislative branch of government can do. So with the passage of this ordinance, it will be time to move forward from publicly debating policy to working collaboratively so we can achieve our greater kind objectives to modernize and improve, highly improve our cities' net level of recycling. So we look forward to working together with the mayor, service director, and administration from the public committee setting on a plan that incorporates the points in the legislation before us that are in accordance with University Heights residents' express wishes. So striving to provide the highest level of rubbish and recycling collection customer service ordinance twenty twenty three oh five has been written to reflect University Heights residents' preferences, which has been expressed in two customer service surveys. You, the residents of University Heights, have made it clear in both surveys, the majority want better recycling. Your highest responses in both surveys are to maintain the current method of backyard sidewalk collection. You indicated your preference not to reduce service personnel staffing levels. The University Heights residents stated preferences very seriously. On January fourth, twenty twenty three, the Service and Utilities Committee consisting of Councilman Chris Pliny, Councilman Justin Wood, Councilman John Rat voted unanimously to use your preferences to formulate twenty twenty three oh five's directives and recommendations. On February sixth, twenty twenty three, the city council voted six to one in favor of the first reading to move forward with this ordinance and include the collection at the side toward backyard. Therefore, twenty twenty ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh five is the next step for our city to finally modernize recycling while maintaining the current method of backyard sidewalk collection and service staffing level in support of University Heights residents' stated preferences. I'm now going to take a moment to clarify some points. Point number one regarding costs. Using current data from December twenty twenty two and the twenty twenty three budget, there is little cost difference between collection methods when staffing levels are unchanged because rubbish and recycling collection is labor driven and labor intensive. The numbers used in the cost comparison spreadsheet presented to the Service and Utilities Committee on January fourth has been first thoroughly reviewed by our finance director and tested to the validity of its numbers. As a postscript, there are additional cost savings not incorporated in the spreadsheet resulting from eliminating the current afternoon truck redeployment to collect new bag recycling through street corners and perhaps due to operational efficiencies that may be cleaned by reassessing collection rates for the first time since two thousand four. Point number two. Regarding options to modernize recycling by transitioning from bag to loose recycling using the current collection method. It can be done. John Puccello, University Heights veteran foreman in charge of rubbish and recycling collection came at to our meeting and I would like to thank him for informing City Council on January seventeen, twenty twenty three that this gap to be away from bag recycling without sacrificing University Heights residents' preferred method of rubbish collection. So let's get working on a plan. Point number three regarding the possible need for more stamping equipment. So one of the main reasons that additional work resources may be needed across the various collection methods would be to achieve the goal of increased recycling by transitioning from bag to loose rec- this collection. This expected increase in recycling requires an administrative plan to accommodate the increase in loose recyclables no matter where collected, whether in the backyard or at the curb. Point number four regarding acting in for the purpose of households obtaining city issued recycling bins and updated recycling education and awareness. Ordinance twenty twenty three oh five directs the administration to devise a plan to support University Heights households to improve the quality of recycling and improve percent recycling rates by reducing contaminating recyclables through this very process. There are seven realities, several realities to recognize and achieve the goal of improving our city's percent recycling rates using this opt-in signup approach. Reality one, recycling is voluntary and optional. Reality two, wishful recycling without proper and consistent ongoing education leads to contaminated recycling. Consistent and ongoing education increases recycling confidence by reducing confusion and misinformation in real time. Reality number three, contaminated recycling spoils clean recycling when mixed together. Reality number four, city issued appropriate sized recycling bins for households signing up to opt in will demonstrate tangible support for this effort that will eliminate the obstacles of cost and of households needing to obtain recycling bins because they'll be issued by the city. However, issuing large pot- plastic recycling bins for parts to all forty two hundred households, whether or not they voluntarily choose to sign up to opt in to recycle can lead to contaminated recycling if the city issue bill, city issue bins are instead used for solid waste. Reality number five, it comes down to the reality of the house and the inhabitants of our neighboring municipalities in Paigaville County. They almost exclusively have herb site collection and then you have automated herb site collection. They do not have sign up for opting in to receive recycling bins or cars, but instead make issue them by the city to actually be required to purchase them if they wish to recycle. Of the fifty nine municipalities in Paigaville County, forty eight percent of them have reported negative percent recycling rates and seventy one percent have either had no change or negative percent recycling rates from twenty twenty till twenty twenty one. The reality is that neigh- neighboring cities in Paigaville County that do not have backyard collection do not have sign up for opting in recycling education and bin issuances do not have the solution or the recipe for improved recycling, period. Simply put, opting in is the way to sign up for the tools needed at no cost to improve cities' percent recycling. So residents who choose to sign up are opting in for training on correct loose recycling based on current MRF specifications. The caveat to receiving recycling bins is to engage in a training to recognize clean and acceptable recyclables that are not contaminated. This is a direct and clear way to supply residents with the understanding of the importance importance and the reasons that some items are acceptable and some are not at any given time. Households that choose to sign up are opting in to receive appropriate sized bins as identified by the service director. The bin size would balance maximizing the amount of loose recyclables that could be lifted safely by service collection staff noting that loose recyclables are lighter than solid waste. Resident households would hopefully be given several ways to easily sign up to opt in for recycling supports that we can discuss in committee public meetings. The administration of signing up through the opt-in recycling program is actually quite simple and not much more labor intensive than had the administration's past proposal to purchase and issue forty two hundred recycling bins for all of University Heights households would have been. There still would be the need to be a location to house the bins until distributed. There still would be a need of a plan for the bin distribution. There still would be a need to maintain the list where the bins were distributed. A main list of issuances would be required to match the quantities purchased and stored in an ongoing manner as is done with any other city commodity. Tracking households engaged in recycling should be relatively easy because service staff will simply fly up the driveway, see the city issued bins, and collect the recyclables at the point of rubbish collection in the very easiest scenario. In summary, I want to thank all who have provided opinions and insights throughout this entire process, especially the University Heights residents from whom I've learned quite a bit. Once again, the passage of ordinance twenty twenty three oh five will make it time to transition to modernize loose recycling. It will make it time to achieve the goal of improving our percent recycling rate. And it will be time to shift away from a policy debate and move us forward in a way to achieve our goals together in a thoughtful, constructive, collaborative, and expeditious manner. So I'm calling the question to make a motion on emergency ordinance twenty twenty three oh five.
There is no motion on the floor to call the question. So, uh. Now, Mr. Corney, did you have anything you want to say on this?
Good evening. Service department staff makes every effort to uh serve the residents of this city and be responsible for their and Mr. Puccello addressed this council. He addressed it with an attempt to maintain service, remain responsive, and uh need city council and request city council not enact this unfunded mandate, which will require additional reason. But Mr. Puccello told council, was that to comply with this ordinance, the service department will need a minimum of two additional recycling trucks and two additional staff members to team those trucks in that way. This should be no surprise. The two thousand and nine study was a a look at improving solid waste collection. It was not strictly about waste. Improving solid waste collection, they analyzed all the routes we ran, they analyzed the uh staff we were using. And the recommendation was clear that automation could either way reduce all costs and improve uh solid waste. Um, there was solid waste study indicated that additional staffing and equipment would be necessary if council wanted to go and add recycling bins to the press. Um, in the council's request to the uh consultant at the time, the consultant was asked to look at supplying bins and collecting the loose material curbside, not rear yard. Uh, the on page fourteen of the report, you'll see question number nine answered by the consultant indicating that the estimated cost in two thousand and eighteen dollars was ninety three thousand five hundred and seventy four dollars. And the additional staff would be necessary and an additional truck would be necessary, and that is doing it curbside. Which now you're talking about doing your rear yard, which requires two additional staff at least and two additional truck. Uh, the curbside is not rear yard. Then the residents bring something out, curbside is easier to collect because the truck is already curbs. If you're talking about going into the rear yard, you have to handle the material first, putting it somehow onto the buggy and then somehow off of the buggy once you get it out to the solid base truck or the recycle that will do. So curbside is not your door point. Again, the service department is unable to comply with the proposed mandate ordinance. And I concur with Assistant Service Director's expression of those other services to rest residents will suck without additional staffing, without additional equipment to do this method under this mandate will require that we alternate staff off of other things they're doing like alcohol patching um special services for answers and other other events, and uh it will impact uh responsiveness to residents.
Okay, thank you, Corney. Yes, uh, Mr. King, um. I've got a few questions. I'm looking at those from uh this vote. Will a transport station be required if we were to move towards back here on this this side?
Without adding in any additional staff and equipment, transport that material, yes, transport station would be required.
Would that be done within city university bases?
Currently, we have no place to do that.
There was a, he also made a comment that uh it could be done this word. Yes, this is to our round here.
That is correct. That's our recycling truck. Any recycling collected, ask go, that's our current contract for disposal of recycling.
Uh, if you were, what's the number of uh service, service from if you're full of staff, how many employees would you have at this time? Not what you currently, if you were a hundred percent moving.
There would be twenty unionized staff that also includes one who's an operator and two mechanics. So there would be seventeen labor. Actually, and one of those seventeen would also be a blessing.
Are you at a hundred percent fully staffed?
We are not.
How many open positions do you?
Currently have three full time and four part time.
How long those positions?
Very, very depending on when people left. We we currently have those open for approximately a month now.
The. My. Would there have been an occasion to move the proponents for the current trucks we just now were to achieve backyard. This is like.
It depend on the method I only select to do the loose collection. If we were to keep the bins on the front of the boat, thirty gallon trash dump loose containers into those when they res- when they got out onto the street and they were full, they would have to empty them. That would require the recycling truck, the opera and man.
Has there been any determination as to the size of the bins that would be used for the maximum allowable age? And so much will be from the scrum. Is the.
There has been no rules written. But current requirement is less than fifty pounds.
And essentially, my understanding is sensing that um Mr. Puccello was that um as the assistant director and also is speaking with the staff, they were not in favor of that kind of system. And they wouldn't, they would support her side.
That is.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cool. Um. Um, it's recording. I understand frustrations of you and your deputy system. Um, in that when I hear you say things like unfunded mandate, um, I can understand the frustrations. I too felt frustration when it came to the collaborative creation of a plan like you just discussed. I remember when Councilman Sacks asked for the plan shooting loose recycling in backyard. And the response from the administration was that we're not going to engage in the process of creating a plan for backyard trash pickup. And therefore, you have here a ordinance which creates mandate without benefit of administrative plan. Um, I will say for myself that I have no problem hearing what you've just said and taking from you a plan to fund and staff this position uh or this mandate. When you asked for two additional staff in the last budget cycle, there was some conversation about whether or not those specific two additional staff members were necessary for only if the loose recycling. two additional staff members were necessary for only if the loose recycling. And I, when I say last, I don't most recently, one before that. Were necessary for some type of move to curbside or if we'd be able to maintain current services based on uh, without those additional two staff members. There was a, I think, um, council was disclaimed to provide additional bodies for move to curbside, which wasn't going to happen. And I think what this year has shown us is that there are general understaffed in your department. More bodies, and you certainly will need the additional two bodies and additional equipment. Uh, whatever the plan is, you don't have to need a mandate, um, in order to, to do this without it being uh, a sacrifice for the services. So in response to the, uh, you know, the frustrations, I hope that that lines it together. If it is a request for two additional bodies, two additional pieces of equipment uh, in order to avoid the need for some transportation, which is an impossibility, let's find a possible way forward. I think uh, Councilman Sachs's view on Mr. Pacheco's statements are most positive, which is, um, uh, there is a possibility, a way forward. It's, it's not feasible now based on the resources we have, but there is certainly a way forward that could be devised. I hope that your department will devise that way forward and present the costs to council. Uh, I have not heard any of my colleagues say that I'm willing to make expenditures, any substantial expenditures in order to get this done. It didn't make this feasible. It's just when we try to engage in that process for this resolution. Didn't receive that cooperation from the administration. I am pleased with the process that Councilman Sachs has taken. It's been reported in the media and stated by various members that we had this study in two thousand nineteen and that council has taken no action on it since. That's inaccurate. In two thousand twenty-one, November of two thousand twenty-one, this council passed a resolution, twenty twenty-one forty-eight, uh, which was a resolution to declare after that study, after our public hearings, based on what we were able to achieve to that point, that the method of backyard or the method of trash collection in the city of University Heights would remain without yard. That was a resolution, was a final, was an act of this body. Was not known, it certainly wasn't the assumption that I think the administration was very clearly advocating for and advocated for thereafter in this budget, uh, but it was an action. And when Councilman Sachs says that we take your preferences very seriously, I think that this ordinance is a, a representation of that, um, taking seriously. That we are moving off of our very clearly set position that the method of trash collection in the city of University Heights would be as it was and making some modification. Here, we've heard that the benefits of loose, both financially, in terms of what could be collected. You know that we have a contract available to us. If we can immediately change to lower the price of our recyclables, if we switch to loose collection. Um, and I don't know how much of that savings would offset the additional costs that you talked about. That certainly will be a discussion even when that plan is presented to council. Um, so I think that this is a departure from that position, uh, and something that I am in support of. The one thing that I wanted to clarify was in parent's portion of this item C. And that says on first reading, um, I believe the intention was to pass this on emergency. Um, is that right, Mr. Sachs?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to amend I O S.
I want to verify what has then become the source of confusion. Any ordinance is on first reading and presented as an emergency ordinance and either be adopted on the first reading, in which case there are two roll call votes. First roll call vote is a vote to waive the two reading rule, that's a no charge. And then the second roll call vote, that passes as a vote to adopt. Or alternatively, it can roll over to a second meeting and be adopted on emergency as a second meeting.
So as written, give us the option to either. But I understand, I'm sure that others have, um. Discussion that they might, I will make a motion to pass it on the ordinance twenty twenty-three oh five. Session of law six four about oh two one title, new services and including emergency. A very good, good motion by Mr. Gould, is there a second?
One second.
Second, this is. So you have further discussion.
We all agree that loose recycling is our goal. However, continued investment in backyard waste collection is not historically responsible way. Strategic capital investment in modern automated equipment able to city both future costs and. Need to commit to investing in our future, not our past.
Thank you.
I might address some of Councilman Gould's issues that he raised. Uh, first of all, frustration, it's not with, uh, council dictating the way that recycling is wanting to be done. The frustration was with the old address of the report that was provided, council, not only in two thousand eight, but also in two thousand and twenty. Process all the way through two thousand. The frustration is that we should be moving forward to automate method collecting, no longer manually collecting. Having men pick stuff up, having them then transported, then pick it up again, put it into a truck and. The results of both of those studies was to be bottomed, was to make it easier. The frustration is, is that we're now adding another manual method of doing recycling. We're stepping backwards, as you say, to doing things the way people did things twenty-five years. That's the frustration. And the additional people that we had asked for were needed on staff because of the expansion of the park. Other things, the programs that we added that we had not done in. That was the request for those two additional people. It was council's misunderstanding and twist where they became part of the solid waste. They were denied. We didn't change our methods. We also didn't have a way of doing anything to add those additional events that we were taking care of. So we've added it in. Okay, there's only so much overtime these men will work on a manual basis. So you need to understand that we are stretched very thin. Automation was the recommendation to free that up. We told council that we were not planning on cutting staff, even if we automated and that it was many year process to getting. So the frustration is adding additional manual work to our people in order to do loose recycling, which is a miniscule part of our solid waste.
Mr. Robb.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I respect what you're saying here and I, and I certainly understand and I'm certainly over the serious. Yeah, that's something that we need to do to make this success. Um, but I really just want to reiterate that. Although the study says X, Y, and Z, at the end of the day, we have represented for the voice of residents. They had their chance to speak. And they hold a bonus for keep pick up. The administration didn't like the thought. They submitted another survey with cost. And it too came back with plurality of chosen votes for that. So I myself, I want to honor the will of the people. They understand the cost. The cost was included in the second survey. The study was included on the first and second survey, I'm linked towards it. There were pictures of what the manual, uh, label would look like. There were pictures of what the automated label would look like. And at the end of the day, I want to honor the will of the people. And that's what they asked. So we have to find a way to make this work with what they have asked us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Robb.
My concern right now. I understand that it's something to discuss and adding two additional positions. And you already have three to four positions are not moved right now. So we can add them. But the bodies aren't. We have a potential, we're, we're not trying to do something that is. With maintaining back. Forty-eight out of fifty-two, fifty-one cities, then a ton, have curbside pickup. From one of three. There's a reason. The staff is looking for efficiencies. And it's laying out our feet and. For some reason, which I'm not, I'm not trying to stand as resident, I like that. Super convenient. I like being able to move it ten feet and a big boat. I understand that Sachs were just trying to put the other comprehensive discussion and was recycling to a real race and I think. When we take a step back, we're looking at the new facilities. That were moving forward. And a financial impact that it's going to have. Mrs. Sachs, with the information she presented several, uh, also means though. This potential for five hundred thousand dollar difference, it could be realized in the budget. Or on the curbside. This is like. And we should not ignore that though. Staff will not be paid off, will be reassigned where it's needed. We know that it's needed with Walter Stinson Park. And other, uh, service issues, roadside repair. And I just don't see this as a potentially good long-term decision because eventually we're going to be back to, we have city council or it's us sitting in chairs or somebody else. We'll be back in the same discussion regarding. Because I associate as being financially viable. Services that we can offer the city, we have other needs. And I think we have to remember that, we did consider them. Especially one of the questions, if you ever talk to those that go over. And we have them coming here saying, move forward. Everybody else has. Potential to do that through services, improve efficiency, reduce costs overall. And we should really remember that if we are being financially responsible for the census.
Thank you, Mr. Corney. This is one of them.
Thank you. One thing that we are missing in this whole equation is we have asked the administration a number of times at this point to give us a plan. Either A, or B, in terms of, um, cost reduction. Now, when Mrs. Sachs puts about a sponge tea, um, what automated looks like versus our current method was no valid, that's due to reduce costs. And if that is not done, then it's a moot point anyways. And that comes down to stamping. Um, so if if you, when you have automated, I think it was six or seven. That in front of me right now, that will, that you would need to be doing outside of all. So then you have your, you have seventeen other, um, you know, employees. Those other, and thirteen are, uh, are, are refugees right now. So you've got seven, um, other people at this point that would be freed up to do all of the work that we need to do. But that, that would be the same.
Well, you, you will have to realize that with staff, people have vacation days, they have sick days, they have other days. Right now, it's taking eleven people just to get the garbage route done in the way it is done today.
So my point is though, if the staff is reused, and let's just say it's automated. You would have staff who'd be up to do all of the other things. So there has to be a hand that has been designed. The automated cost is the same as the backyard cost, right? And until there's a plan to change that, there is no cost reduction, almost.
I, I beg to differ on that point of cost. The spreadsheet that, uh, also Sachs prepared, we had no, yeah, I, I have no idea. The reports that you receive, solid waste collection analysis. Don't, don't do that justice. There are costs to doing a bin and having somebody collect loose recycling.
This is saying, oh, yeah, this is. Who's over here? This is.
The costs were taken correctly from the table. The costs were taken directly from the budget. You, you weren't really talking to me, were responding to my emails, were responding to pretty much anything. So I couldn't get information from you. But just like I.
We've provided that information repeatedly.
So I took it straight from books. It's not made up and it was based on the, and it was based on current, not twenty eighteen or anything before then, before December twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Sachs.
Um, I, I don't know what those numbers show, uh, how you could possibly come up with a no additional cost for adding loose recycling. It's, it's not going to.
It's a lot, a lot now. It's not, they're not a lot out.
No, it leaves.
You don't have the forms.
You were not at that meeting, but it was public record and it was available. And I did say at the meeting, and I've said since then, it reached three times that I did provide a first review from the finance record. So there were options available. You could have called me. You could have reached out to me, but I'm glad and fair and everything. I can try and very hard to speak with Mayor Brennan, to speak with you. And you refused. And you said publicly in a meeting that you received my questions. You received my emails and you deliberately refused to respond. They were frivolous. They were, I don't know, slightly interesting advocates. So. I, those are real numbers and I'm glad to talk to you anytime and I'm forward to a comprehensive plan. Give us a plan. And then we'll review it. So if we do agree on loose recycling, if we do agree that we want to achieve a better percentage of recycling, then we'll look at the data. And we'll work together. Give us a plan and we'll base our decisions on that going forward.
You know, I, I, I didn't want to get into this. I feel like now, this last time. You know, the, the executive and administrative power of the city is hell and there. And the mayor is the city's own full-time elected official. And generally, since nineteen forty-one, since the charterism. You know, the administration sets the policy, the city council is here to help enact that policy. And it does that by funding. When you go out of your way, when you go on your own way and create legislation contrary to administrative policy, and that's not only an overreach, that's a hostile. Especially in this case, where what's been proposed in this order is contrary to all the experts in the field, contrary to our own solid waste studies too. And is contrary to administrative policy. And I will also put for because it's been said this, it's contrary to the surveys. It's contrary to the statistical analysis. It is contrary to the to, to the, the, the actual, it's not looking at raw data, but when you analyze the data, when you weigh the data for population. When you do the cross tabs and look at people who have had residents who have had curbside automated in other communities and thus are familiar with also having used curbside, rather than backyard pickup in their own. There is a slight preference for curbside auto.
And that is compelling. There's a built-in bias asking people what they want. And it's, do you like what you have? Or how about the other thing over here that you don't know anything about, because you know. So the fact that four in ten people. Want to keep things exactly the way they are. And five in ten are open for a change. Those are the strong numbers for keeping what we have. Those are numbers that suggest we need to be looking at doing something better. Something sustainable, something that controls costs. Something that is less risky for our employees, something that reduces our carbon footprint. And something that also improves recycling. The one part of this, which is the council's job, is funding. And that is the one thing that still is not addressed. At the Service Utilities Committee meeting. But I asked you, Mrs. Sax. I asked about funding and you told me. That the, that the administration, the service department was going to have to figure out how to implement this. With the equipment we have, with the people we have and the funding we have. That is not a serious suggestion. That is not serious policy. That is. That is something that does not serve our community and does not move this process forward. You know, we've been working on this. It's, I mean, Jeff, we're going much longer. And this is not the correct out. It simply isn't. And, you know, I know there was going to be a committee meeting on this. It wasn't held. I feel like, uh. This work is not complete and kind of like the engineering ordinance last week. We shouldn't be passing something without having done all the work in. This work is incomplete. Need to go back, look at this. Yeah. One of the things that I've seen with you. How you obstruct the work that communities are doing. Providing the input collaboratively. I, I get it. Politically, for environmental reasons, it is part of your platform. That we switched automated curbside collection and you've been cleaning them. You have said in committee meetings, you are not going to engage with the process planning contrary to that plan. And that has been the position that you've taken. So if you say. You know, to characterize councilperson Sax as saying, well, you're going to have to do it with the number of people you have, the number of machines you have. Well, that's true because you kind of planned with us a way to change that according to the number of those you have in this council. We can keep it the way it is. And which would be backyard bagged collection. I think what we've suggested is to switch away from blue bags to save money. And on the amount of, uh, the poundage that goes down. We can join our other communities and send it down at a lower price. We can join the other communities that have signed on to a contract that was renewed, uh, last fall. And the same thing with the task force that was put together to talk about these. Personal service costs. Personal service costs. We have a committee. And it put together. The people and council members and as. Vice Mayor Wilds outlined on record at our last meeting. You stop that process from going forward. And so to say that this council, this council will continue to move forward. I think that the point that has been made time and time again. Is that when presented with the option to stop. Working and to stop moving forward and to stop implementing. Uh, you know, the, the role of the people and the. View of this council. Its work, what is best plan forward or to just. Not do it because you're not going to work with us. You will continue to pass forward. This is, you will continue to attempt to move the city forward. And we can do that in a way that is collaborative. However, if we can't, then you are stuck with exactly the resources that you have. That's not the best way forward for the people that work for the city. The best way forward is to make sure that they are resourced. And I appreciate what Mr. Gordon said. This is not what the preference would be, would be automation. Um, and that is not the goal that we have on this council. And I think that there are improvements along the line of fire impact. And for all the other things that I know you outlined, switching to a loose background collection. But to characterize, uh, you know, the work that Ms. Sax did. Um, as incomplete it is. It isn't. That's not because she hasn't worked tirelessly to gather that data. I have seen the emails that she has sent. Time and time again, asking you and members of your administration for a response and ignore her. It's a matter of public record. Your public emails. There are emails that go out and they are not a response. I don't know why she has not responded to. I do not know why her view as the chair of the service committee is belittled. And the questions that she asks the chair are ignored. But that is the response or lack of response from this administration. And then to say, well, we didn't have a full information. This is not full and complete. I'm your mate. It engages in the process of creating. I think you've heard from multiple members of this council, they are willing to resource service department. The way the service department said that it needs to be resourced in order to make this land work. And it is not the one hundred percent. Desire that the administration have for curbside automated pickup. And if there was somewhere in the middle to needle that. That was acceptable to the citizens and I'm sure this is not what we want to vote on. What we have now is a little away from the position that we took in November of twenty twenty one. Provides some benefits that are already outlined in United's box. Hey, thank you, Mr. Google. Or is it? Hey, the question's been called. There's no further debate. It's honest. Okay. Two little calls. The first is on suspension of.
Sax, hi, this is Lando, um, this is Rat.
Hi.
I'm. Honey.
Right. Then on the main motion.
Sax, hi, Slendo, hi, Sprite.
Hi.
Spice and. Suco.
Ah.
Suzy.
Then.
Suzy.
And. I voted five to two, the motion there. Thank you. So. Excellent. We are back to item seven, reports and communications from the city of council and the taking of action there.
Thank you. Um, there was a council of all facility of infrastructure speakers meeting. Yesterday, where we discussed, um, professional services, specifically the engineering piece of the professional services. It's a fascinating meeting. Um, we have an organism that will be decided. The amount of what is to be presented at the next council meeting. We spoke on the live graph which he's taken and all. Um, Mr. Shilly was extraordinarily helpful and, and collaborative in his process. And, and publicly. Also began a discussion of an RFQ for the next year. Engineering contract, the one one, which comes before. Um, that will be gradually presented, um, in a council of a whole meeting with the next month. Begin and will be processed. Those will actively be about and we wanted to make sure that it's secured by.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. White. So are there any other reports? So maybe now we now turn to reports and communications. We'll start with finance directors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to give everyone a little background on January. In January, we started with a beginning balance in general bond of six point five four million dollars. Which had revenue of one, one, three million dollars. Our expenses for the month were one, five, three. So our unexpendable balance decreased six point one three billion dollars. That's for the general. For all funds, our net revenue for the month was one, two, six million. Our expenses were one point nine nine million. So our unexpendable balance dropped from ten million dollars to ninety three million dollars. Those are largely a result of some deferrals in revenue. I know it's our last. About the county being behind in the jurisdictions of. Property taxes. So we hope to catch up in the month of February and, um. Get back to where we hit. Be at the end of the month. Um, this one. As far as income taxes go, in January, we collected a net of. Eight hundred fifty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars. Um, last year, the month of January, we posted eight hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. So this year is a forty nine thousand dollar increase. Uh, we did get our collections in February that the result of the January. Uh, revenue collections posted by Rio. That was one point zero seven million. Last year, we collected one point zero nine million. It's roughly a seventeen thousand dollar difference to negative. So year to date, through these first two months for income taxes. Were up about thirty two thousand dollars, which is a little bit under a half percent. Income taxes look okay. As I said, I think we'll get caught up with the distributions. Got our second advance from the county this month. So that'll catch us up. We also did get the. Countment for the service, I would say, a thousand dollars. And even in February as well. So I'll look forward to. The numbers at the end of this. We have, as I said, we started the audit in twenty twenty two. We'll get that done a little earlier than normal. Yes, our financial statements. Be filed by the end of May. Um, we're shooting for target. People to get that done. The audit itself is due done by the end of June. So we're looking to do something, um, wrap that up. And, um, I'll get some written reports out to you. This week, and we'll post in some change with that. In the past in January.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions, Mr. Penn? Mr. Penn. No, yeah, thank you. All the same, you please, Chief Roberts. No report, thank you. All the same, you fire, Chief Perrin.
Thank you, Mayor, Good evening, Council. Um, we've seen a few inquiries about hydrants and water mains in the city. So I just had a couple of report on. Um, only pending projects, Cleveland Water, to our knowledge. Is, uh, the hydrant valve replacement at twenty one eight four one though, on the Boston market. That work was completed this past Sunday overnight. And then there is a water main break on point three forty six. Uh, that Cleveland Waters currently has a work taken out and will be replacing in the next thirty days. Everything else.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions that you took on this report? Seeing one, we'll move on to services form.
I would just like to give council a heads up that, uh, time change weekend is coming soon. On, uh, March tenth, Friday, we will be open at service department for. Household hazardous waste and paper shredding. Uh, if you drop it off on Friday, it will get shredded on Saturday. Probably here at the eleven. It will be open from nine until one in the afternoon.
It's Saturday.
So Saturday, eleven, uh.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Penn? All right, we'll move on then. See, housing community development, Strangle Grant. A report, thank you. City engineer, Mr. Chin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Good evening, Council. Um, one quick report is the, uh, water line project we're doing this year. We're doing a north cliff road and one block of Sabre. Um, we did submit the plans that did water in Lake Sabre. We did get them back a couple of weeks ago, so. I'll be in front of you shortly for, uh. About a month, uh, requesting you allow for this. It did its work and went anyway. Sometime in the spring. Cleveland water.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chin. Any questions, Mr. Chin? And saying that, we'll move on. See communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cook about we hear you have a public urgency. But he didn't want me to let you know that his egg bag is, uh, should be emailed boxes by the end of the year. Economic development struck. Thank you. Uh, we now turn to item nine, A, motion to authorize the mayor to enter the contract for transportation services contract, the senior transportation. Next one. In an amount, now to receive twenty thousand dollars. Table on January seventeenth and February sixth, for a fine minister here. Answer any questions you may have about. This come up to volume. If you wanted to make an open statement today, otherwise. Happy to, uh.
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, I understand there may have been some questions about fuel escalator last time. I actually put together a little, man, may I approach?
Oh, yes, yes. If you have something to pass up, please, Mr. Penn. I approach, I felt like I just stopped.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was because, um, some confusion, but I thought I would just walk through. Given what. Posing to charge. And depending upon where gas might be, how the fuel escalators would work. I'll wait for a minute. Hey, no, um. We developed our pricing. I can ensure this contract. Yeah, you know, seventy five cents. A gallon and what we, we will do when we, um, go back and invoice for the activity during the month. Um, is to go back to that, that month we're charging for and look at the, um, there's a website. Gas, fuel, the website that shows the different average rates. Region. We look at our region. So if I look back and, um, the average gas price in previous month was four dollars. But you'll see that there's a quarter difference now between the three seventy five will set our price. And the, the rate, the average rate that gas was the month we're charging is four dollars. There's a twenty five cent difference. And if. The city of university heights provides seventy five trips. Now to individuals during that month, that quarter gets, um, multiplied times the seventy five trips. And so for that entire month, fuel escalator charge. And anything excess of, um, three dollars. The group trip is a little bit different and the work gets a little more, more complicated. But, um, we are providing, um, a group trip, obviously, more. Sometimes it might be one person. Hopefully it can be organized in such. And our group trip is based on, um, to flat, that flat rate of sixty dollars for five people. Um, it's the same scenario that I just presented before, but we adjust. Um, we have a fuel escalator adjustment for that group trip of one point. Um, and so. You can see the math, um, that one point three is, um, multiplied times that, that twenty five cent difference. Which gives us thirty two and a half cents, which is actually what we use for the group trip. I mean, we're, we're going for a long. Going for a longer period of time. So twenty five, so if, if we're spending more. Only and spending a little more money because we are going for a longer period of time in order to provide, um, food. So there's that. Point three. Yep, point three, um, adjustments blowing up. So do that. These, these, um, increases, at least right now, are going to be, and hopefully will stay pretty negligible. Um, you know, given what gas has been doing. But I, um. Uh. I'm sorry. So you can see the thirty two and a half cents then, um, I proposed here that we provided twenty group trips. City of University Heights during a month. Um, that point. Three, two, five doesn't apply to trips. Or that month, at least for the group trips, it's an additional charge. In month five, give you all the different scenarios and it's possible that more than five people will go on a group trip. So, um. We begin to charge. So um we begin to charge a fraction that. Thirty two and a half cents, we go to the, you know. It's as if we start another hour. So again, there is. Um, that fuel escalator that we charge, you know, for the addition. I, it would be great if we had. Um, usually our our food trips are are less than five, but it's um um. Even more efficient and cost effective for the city. People taking food.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Penn. Are there any questions, Mr. Penn, this um? Yes. So just, uh, so the total escalator charge on single ride month X is eighteen seventy five charged to.
For all of those trips.
Oh.
Yeah, I know.
All trips. That will be, and based on your your data that you have, based on seventy five trips, that twenty five. Cents difference, I mean, average and the contract cost results in only increase of. Thirty three seventy five trips of eight, less than I know. Okay. And that number below that six fifty is that for twenty trips? Not an individual. That's the, that's the part I didn't understand. If it was like that, it, this number was being created for like. Every trip, which, you know, I mean, almost half the price of the total. I didn't understand how that would work in a solid dollars.
So you could look at that, you could look at that as maybe now being thirty five dollars and twenty five cents. We can say, you know, that's one way to get it. Um, the other is for us to just take twenty five cents.
It's really clarified. Thanks so much for putting. Mrs. Penn.
Just like, thank you, patients. That's okay. I had to pay attention in school to story. And how. They even.
Uh, well, you haven't actually made a motion, asked it. I'd like to make sure we do that before you get this.
Don't sit down.
So. So we have a motion to approve or authorize the mayor and the contract on Mr. Cool. Is there a second?
Okay, second, please.
Second, by Mrs. Sax, a discussion on the motion. And um, this is Tom Street, all the wrong.
This is Zach, hi. This is Rod.
Hi.
This is Wise.
Hi.
Su Kuni.
Hi. Hi.
Very good, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. President, for the agents and and for returning your seat. Thank you. Next is item B, a motion to approve the engagement letter of St. Paranick I O C and Associates LLC for the provision of labor council services for twenty twenty three. We will not exceed seven thousand dollars. Andy, nothing.
Uh, yes, the uh Labor Council did not give enough the dating agreement letter. As you know, the original um contracts were up three years ago. There, those got delayed. Um, some of that was due to COVID. And some of the other things have gone out of time. Um, we're in negotiation this year with reader unions. Um, police, fire, and service. And so I ask that we could get a new engagement letter to cover us. Um, and to save the, and to keep in scope of the work. The um, Mr. O'Seans.
Yes, Mr. Con, only thing you care about. Uh, Mr. Kennedy summarized that the rate is the same rate that. Lot record is made in the charge on mitigation and all said manners. It's a favorable way to see. Their motion to approve. Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, I'm gonna thank Mr. Kennedy. Um, I realize that we didn't have. See any engagement about a. The motion that we started negotiations. Yeah. Glad to see it's also at the same rate. The new professional service ordinance will um take care of this one forward. So. So. The one thing I just wanted to mention is that I see it then some, first, hopefully we'll be done with Mr. Paveens by then. But as we've seen in the past, sometimes they. Didn't finish. It's every man or so, that's. In mind.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion? Motion approved by Mrs. Wong. Is there a second? I'll say, second by Mr. Cool. Any discussion on the motion? Questions for? I was to have once. All right, go ahead. So I'm doing that foresight, that being, what would tend to be our concept? It was very, this is contract, your professional services. Um, ordinance requires future contracts to be given out. With foresight, seeing kind of where things are really. Send Mr. Alex's contract with hoping, or would it be to live the knowledge that the professional services require that? And the knowledge that. Has yet, and we would learn. Since meteor.
I would assume because we're out in the middle.
Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion? This is Thomas, we call the room.
Seth, name. Ms. Rod.
Hi.
This is Wise, I.
Boo.
Hi.
Su Kuni.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, I vote on one motion, Karen. Next is item D, ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh nine. Transfer of funds, the general bond one hundred of capital fund four hundred. Building improvement fund for eleven street lighting fund to a free payroll stabilization fund two ninety nine sewer operating fund two oh one. Sewer capital fund four oh one and shade free fund and declaring an emergency. This is not an emergency, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, these are a series of transfers that were included as part of twenty twenty three permanent budget. Um, the two hundred and ten thousand dollars that's transferred to the capital fund will allow us. Budget for all the um appropriations that were approved in the permanent budget. And we do an annual transfer to the improvement fund. That's fifty thousand dollars. We currently have a balance of one hundred fifty four thousand. So this will take us over two hundred thousand dollars in that fund. To be used at some point in the future on facilities development. Uh, street lighting fund transfers fifty thousand dollars. That's more than we have done traditionally in the past. Couple of years, just because we did not adjust the assessments. And street lighting costs have gone up considerably in the last three, four years. Uh, the payroll stabilized stabilization fund is twenty seven thousand dollars. Everybody will recall, that's the fund to set up to protect this for the extra pay period that occurs on several eleven years. So there's a twenty seven thousand dollar annual transfer to that. Um, no funds have ever been expended to that today, so we help you balance there. And the remaining three for sewer operations were kept from the chatry pond. Our additional transfers that support the assessments. The assessments usually are calculated in the rate of approximately ninety five percent for the total. Needs of the farm. So this makes up that smaller.
Very, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Is there a discussion? And does their motion improve on emergency?
Okay. Um.
A motion to prove on emergency by Mrs. Sax. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Penn, any discussion? Staying known, we'll take two votes, versus on suspension rules.
Seth, I'm.
Hi.
Swales, I.
Oh.
I'm.
Su Kuni.
I. I.
Well, the main motion.
Seth, hi. So that.
Hi.
Wise, I.
Boo.
I.
Kuni.
I. Uh.
A motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next is item F, ordinance twenty twenty three dash eleven, an ordinance amendment modified ordinance section one two four six point oh one C. An increase in remuneration for members of the architectural review board and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Uh, Mr. McConville, you want to? Uh, yes, Mayor, this is uh just another piece of cleanup legislation and um subjects in tandem with the. Um, committee ordinances that you passed at your last meeting, raising the rate of remuneration for ARB members from. Fifty dollars a meeting to a hundred dollars a meeting, and thereby moving that rule consistent with all the other um board admission numbers. Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you and I was meeting. As you speak. From the south.
Uh. I'm not even sure.
No, no.
I will let you know what happened. So I will let you know what I have on the need. If there's a discussion on that, if not, is there a, their motion? To approve on emergency? So. Motion by Mr. Kudy, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Sax, and for the discussion? Yes, Mr. Cool. I think the title of the nomination was by. We see. I'll take that one with us, thank you. On point, good discussion, but. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Conville. On Mr. Goad, not. Will you? Um, Mr. McConville, um, I was. Like this, we're talking about a certain business. One was requested by a customer vice for certain items. Um, specifically other messages that we receive. And it would be taken as above a part of the cost, I believe, so in this. Uh, there is a public worth of cost um for for election, but all. Right, make your mental. Very good. Mrs. Thomas, big venture, doesn't it? Is there any further stuff? This is Thomas. So we'll take two votes, first and saw me suspension rules.
Seth, hi.
So that.
Hi.
This is Wise. Boo.
Oh.
Kuni.
I. I.
On the main motion.
Seth, I'm.
Same.
This is Wise, I. This is Boo.
I.
Kuni.
I. I.
Very good, mo- motion carries. Uh, next is a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings, personal, real estate matters. Administration of No Matters uh this evening, for which we seek an executive session. So we'll turn now to reports, standing committees, and taking of action thereon. First, the building housing, and I'm quite glad they had to leave this, and we'll settle reports. Being on the community outreach, Mr. Penn.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll be pulling for the meeting of. I T, many. To discuss. It's a defense.
Very good. Economic, all of Mr. Rome. Finance, Mrs. Wong.
Maybe, yeah. Um, I had a conversation with Mr. Kennedy about. Needing some of that that we have for term investments, so we're gonna earn some interest on it, and I will spill to you, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Recreation, Mr. Kim. Uh, Mayor, there'll be a bill going out shortly for our recreation meeting. We discussed the upcoming semester of all. Project activities. Stuff. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, safety, Mr. Cool.
Cool.
Thank you. Uh, servicing boys, Mr. Sebs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll be following also for services and utilities committee needing to move forward. With Lucy cycling, as you heard tonight, and I appreciate everyone's. Um, but the uh support it received in the uh to pass. And uh, I just look forward to working together to finally improve our recycling and respect. The wishes of the University Heights residents, welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Sebs. Really the whole, Mrs. Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There will be a new council of the whole facilities and infrastructure meeting. Um, that I will be following in the next weeks, maybe you will. Um, the ARB that will go out um for year this year, like then the year in time here. And also to review the final assessment. So.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wong. Are there any reports of special committees? Staying known, is there any unfinished or miscellaneous business? Staying known, is there a motion to adjourn? Seth. And we'll take a moment about Mrs. Wise, the second by Mr. Rob, this is Thomas, we call it all.
This is Seth, hi. Ms. Rad.
Hi.
Wise.
Boo.
Hi. Hi. Um.
Three twenty five, we're adjourned.